Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Jones with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, also known as MASDEP. Thanks for joining us this evening for this public hearing concerning the water quality certification application filed by First Light Power. Also helping me this evening are Tori Wu, who's working behind the scenes to facilitate a smooth hearing. Pam Harvey, a colleague who will be doing a brief presentation in a few minutes, and Elizabeth Stefanik, who's also helping out behind the scenes. We're holding this official public hearing, which is being recorded and conducted remotely in a Zoom webinar format. The recording will be posted on MASDEP's website. The purpose of the hearing is to accept public comments on First Light Power's application for a 401 water quality certification that was filed with MASDEP on April 22, 2024. Here's how we'll run the hearing this evening. To minimize background noise and interference, the host, Tori, has muted all remote participants and turned off the chat function. In a few moments, my colleague Pam Harvey will be providing a brief PowerPoint presentation about the Massachusetts water quality standards. Those are the laws that guide our review, MASDEP's review, of First Light's application for water quality certification. After that brief presentation, we'll hear first from elected and appointed officials who wish to provide public comments on the water quality certification application, followed by the remaining members of the public, who also wish to provide comments. In a moment, I'll ask my colleague Pam to start her brief presentation. And after that, after the completion of Pam's presentation, I will let you know how you can volunteer to provide public comments this evening, starting first with elected and appointed officials. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Pam and Tori. Pam?
All right. Thank you, Tim, and welcome to everyone who's attending tonight. We're just beginning here with an orientation or overview introduction to Section 401 of the Federal Clean Water Act and the state surface water quality standards, really to explain the state role and the licensing of hydro power projects or facilities. So I'm not going to get into the details of the FERC process, again, as federal energy regulatory commissions processes. They're very complex, and it would take a long time to get through those as well. But one thing, it is important here, and that you should know is that the laws governing energy facilities largely preempt state environmental laws. So 401 is not preempted, and so it is our regulatory tool to ensure compliance with the water quality standards. So it's quite important from that perspective. Next slide. Okay, turning first to the Federal Clean Water Act. This was the workhorse of a statute that was passed in 1972 with this very ambitious purpose to restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the nation's waters. And that was, you know, more than 50 years ago, and it's still a work in progress. But you may be familiar with some of the permits that are issued under it for some wetlands permits, NPTDS, and then also these 401 water quality certifications of FERC licenses. States, and there's both federal and state roles under the Federal Clean Water Act. States establish water quality standards. They monitor and assess all the water bodies in the state on a regular basis to see how they're doing, to identify any impairments of water bodies, so that we can impose requirements for restoration. And again, the important role we have in certifying federal licenses to be sure they meet water quality standards. Next slide. Okay, so the next series of slides are about the water quality standards themselves. They are, what they do is establish the goals for every water body to identify what the uses are and set criteria necessary to protect those uses. There's a certain kind of language that's involved in all these water quality standards, and I'm going to be using that, but you'll begin to get a handle on it fairly soon, I hope. States all have their own water quality standards. Now, it's, they are, there's a fair amount of consistency between them because EPA has quite extensive regulations on water quality standards and also does review and approve water quality standards. And because the statute's so old, and EPA and states have been doing water quality standards for a long time, there's quite a, there's a body of guidance and history involved in it, too, that states look to in the interpretation of water quality standards. So the Massachusetts Surface Water Quality Standards are founded 314 CMR4. You can pick that up on the web and have a look at it if you're so inclined. It has these different components of it, the classes of water bodies, designated uses, the criteria that are set to meet the water quality standards, and then these provisions for anti-degradation. I mentioned in passing as well that at the end of the standards, there are a series of maps and tables that show all the water bodies in the watersheds and water bodies in the state, not just, you know, for one river, the Connecticut River, but shows it by segments. And so they're quite particularized. Every lakes and ponds all have their own, all their own entry that says, has information about them. So everyone has their own favorite, favorite water body, and so you can have a look there to see how they're doing. Again, they are reviewed periodically, so they're up to date. Next slide. Okay, beginning with classes and uses. They are the classes of waters. Two examples here is Class A for inland waters. That's public water supplies of separate classifications for inland and coastal waters. And then Class B, and the Connecticut River is a Class B, and those are designated as habitat for fish, wildlife, other aquatic life, and aquatic life is sort of the catch-all term, and for primary and secondary contact recreation. So, and that's sort of the shorthand for the fishable, swimmable that you may hear about in the context of the Clean Water Act. Class B waters can also be used for agriculture, irrigation, and certain industrial cooling and process uses. So it's a broad classification. Massachusetts has no C, Class C waters. We're all above average here in Massachusetts, so that's good anyway. But we're working on water quality in a number of instances. And then finally, there are criteria, numeric and narrative criteria that are established for designated uses, and I can move on to the next slide. Okay, so the criteria, this is where the regulations establish the standards for water quality. And an example here of a numeric standard is for temperature. There's a certain degrees, 83 degrees, set for warm water fisheries for Class B. And then they can be narrative, too, which is sort of free from oil and grease. So those are the two types. And they're used, these standards, and they're way more elaborate than this. There are many different categories for the different classes, and there's also minimum criteria established for all classes. And so, and the standards are used for, and as part of the programs for permitting purposes. They may be part of water quality-based effluent limitations for discharges from wastewater treatment plants, and that sort of thing. And then importantly, when water quality is impaired, when the criteria are not met. So in doing assessments of the water bodies throughout the state, it's noted if there's impairments, and that has significance for us and trying to get some restoration efforts underway. Next slide. Okay, so this is, I mentioned uses, designated use, and existing uses. There's specific, there's specific language in the water quality standards about that, too. I mentioned aquatic life, and that's sort of, it's an important category because it tends to be the most sensitive use, and typically, the more sensitive use gets the most protection. So ours is the most key use that we're looking at. And you can see the definition here as a native and naturally diverse community of aquatic plants and animals, and also does include specifically rare and endangered species. And it also includes the habitats of these species. And then you can also see recreation and swimming here, primary contact, which is swimming, secondary contact, boating and fishing for recreational use. Those are important, too. And again, that's sort of the fishable, swimmable for Class B waters. And then there's some separate things for Class A, public water supply. And again, for Class B, there can be other uses. So, and then there's the second kind of, there's designated use, and then the second category called existing use. And those are defined, and again, this is sort of the, it's a, there are slight variations from state to state, but our definition includes for existing uses designated uses, and then any other uses that don't impair the designated uses, fishable, swimmable, in the case of Class B, that are actually attained on or after this date in 1975. And again, this is sort of a part of the history and tradition of water quality standards, this concept of existing uses, which can be quite important. Next slide. Okay, and one thing, one area where it's important is these anti-degradation provisions. And again, all state water quality standards do have these provisions. They're part of the EPA requirements to ensure that the quality of waters is protected and maintained, the existing uses and the water quality necessary to protect those uses is important. And then in situations where there's high-quality waters, meaning waters that, where waters already exceed the criteria, they have to be protected at that higher level, unless there's some specific authorization that's fairly hard to get. So it's to be sure that, you know, waters that are exceeding the standards continue to do so. And then there's some other provisions, again, that aren't really relevant here, but for situations of public water supplies and some special resource waters that are called out for even higher levels of protection. Next slide. Okay, so that was the short story of the water quality standards. I'm going to turn now to Section 401. Again, this is the section of the Federal Clean Water Act, and it specifically requires any applicant for a federal licenser permit will result in a discharge activity related to a discharge navigable waters has to obtain a certification from the state showing that the activity will be in compliance with the act. And again, this applies to federal licenses and permits, including the, you know, this FERC license situation that we're of interest tonight, but also these other types of permits, 404 permits, and permits for wastewater discharges. And so what the 401 water quality certification does is, in certifying compliance with water standards, it looks to the criterion uses, can include conditions, or can, to be sure standards are met, or can deny if standards are not met. And then the conditions can include any other appropriate requirement of state law. And then importantly, the 401 conditions and DEP's water quality certification with these conditions becomes conditions of the federal licenser permit. So it's quite a powerful tool. Next slide. Okay, so you may be wondering in all this how the water quality standards apply to flows that are certainly important for hydro power licenses. And so, you know, clearly, there's energy projects, hydro power projects are licensed, so they come up under, by FERC. So they're susceptible to 401 licensing, and they do typically affect flows. They may also affect some pollutants, but often flows, and sometimes erosion or other things related to flows are important. And that actually was not really completely clear in the statute or the regulations, but it became clear in a Supreme Court case issued in 1994. It involved Washington State and their Department of Ecology, which wanted to set minimum stream flows to a dam on the Dos Wallop River to protect their salmon. Obviously, this is, excuse me, very important in Washington and the state of Washington. And so, and the company, the Public Utility District, challenged that, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court. There was great interest in it. There was an amicus brief that involved, I think, more than 40 states. Massachusetts participated, standing for the proposition, which was accepted by the Supreme Court, that water quality and quantity flows, that was sort of an artificial distinction to see them separately, that really lowering of quantity would affect quality and would affect the designated uses. So that's how that part of the water quality standards and how they affect flows became cemented in the water quality standard scheme. Massachusetts water quality standards have a specific statement that flows shall be maintained, restored, to protect existing and designated uses in their 401 certifications of FERC licenses. So we're quite clear on that point. Next slide. Okay, so a 401 certification, what you can expect to see in it, there's a, typically, there's a fairly large background section and a fair amount of finding of facts. And the basic, the basic component of it is a statement that is reasonable assurance that the operation of the facility as conditioned, and typically, there are many conditions, will comply with state water quality standards. And this is what it would include, protection of existing and designated uses, aquatic life, again, which includes fish and these other wildlife and plants, rare species, habitat. Recreation is also important. And then any numeric or narrative criteria that may be applicable, importantly, addressing any impairments associated with the facility that's, that, you know, due to the operation of the facility, that's important, too. And then typically, there are long-term monitoring and mitigation plans. The terms of the license can be typically quite long, so it's important to be sure that the project will meet the standards over the term of the license. So that's an overview of the 401 and the water quality standards. And it basically, you know, what I've done pretty much is set forth the regulatory framework for the issuance of 401 water quality certification. We're here today to hear your comments and concerns about the First Light relicensing on the Connecticut River. And so, and that, because we've received their application for certification. There's no expectation here that you'll fit your comments or observations that you've come here tonight to offer within any of this regulatory framework. So don't worry about that at all. We're happy to hear from you about things you've experienced and observed along the river. And so, but as we move forward, meaning DEP moves forward evaluating the application, the public comment, it's just good for you to understand that the framework will be applying in making decisions about whether or not the project meets water quality standards and what conditions might be necessary in order to meet those standards. So thank you very much. Turning it back to Tim.
Great. Thanks, Pam. And thanks for an excellent presentation. And one of the things that was excellent about Pam's presentation is she was able to distill a very complex body of law into, I don't know how many slides, 11 slides. And I want to emphasize one thing that Pam said, which is, this is a complex area of the law, and we don't expect you to know it nor to frame your comments according to it. We want to hear what you have to say. It's our job to take the body of law, the water quality standards, and then apply it to the facts as we learn them from you and from our own investigation and research on our end. So, but we did want to give you this overview so that you have it and you have a better understanding of the framework within which we have to operate. And after today, the recording of this hearing will be posted on the website. And I think we might actually post just a separate section of Pam's presentation. So if you want to learn more about the standards, you can go back and replay Pam's video and give Pam some more clicks for great reviews out there. All right, at this point, we will turn to the portion of the hearing tonight where we accept public comments. And as I said before, we'll first, you know, periodically, my camera is going blurry, and so I may have to reset it just so it's not blurry. And I apologize for that, but it will reset. We're going to turn to the period of comments where we accept comments from elected or appointed officials. And then after that, once the elected and appointed officials are done, we'll start accepting comments from the public. And here's how we'll accept comments. So if there are elected or appointed officials here who wish to provide comments, please raise your virtual hand now, if you have not already done so. And after elected and appointed officials who wish to comment have done so, we will call on members of the public and ask them to raise their hands at that time. And again, we'll call on you in the order you raise your hand. You will be unmuted in the order you raise your hands, and then you'll be asked to state your name and affiliation if you're speaking on behalf of a group or organization, and provide your comments. If you're using a cell phone, you can use star nine to raise or lower your hand, and you can press star six to use the mute/unmute function on your phone. Commenters will be limited to approximately three minutes. You're going to have to excuse me when I interject and then let you know that it's about three minutes, and I'll ask you to wrap up shortly when I do that. MASDEP will not be responding to your comments. For this type of public hearing, we're only here to listen and record the comments so that we have them later to consider as part of rendering our decision. All right, now, at this point, we'll turn to any elected or appointed officials who wish to make public comments this evening, and we'll call on you in the order in which you raised your virtual hand. Tori?
We have one raised hand, Bee Jac. When you, you will receive a prop to join as panels. Please click "Join as panelist," and then you may unmute yourself. Turn on your video if desired, and state your name and affiliation.
You're muted.
Darn it.
We do that, too.
Doesn't matter how many years of Zoom experience you have. My name is Bee Jac. I'm on the Select Board for the Town of Northfield, and I've been authorized by the Town of Northfield to speak on behalf of the citizens. And I want to point out, for those who are unfamiliar with where Northfield is, we're on, and I'm right on Main Street, in case you're hearing background noise. We are right near the border with Vermont and New Hampshire, and we are one of, I can't even think of another town that is literally split by the river. So East and West Northfield exist on either side of the river. What's unfortunate, despite our relationship with the river, is that we have little agency over the river. And so we wanted to raise concerns and make sure that it's stated that we work very closely with our neighbors, Gill and Montague, as well as the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, and we support their comments that will be offered during this period as well as those that were offered during the FERC period. And in 2019, the townspeople voted unanimously at town meeting to express concerns, both to FERC, and I'm going to share those with you as well. And mostly, they center around erosion and the loss of property and land along the river. Even though I live on Main Street, I'm maybe a few feet from the river. I can't see the river. I can't really commune with the river unless I go to the very south of Northfield or the very north of Field, of Northfield, which are controlled. The south is, the access is via the First Light River View, and the north is via the DCR and MAS Wildlife Boat Ramp. But the river is really important to Northfield as well as to the other towns because of the recreational and tourism opportunities and also historic and cultural properties. And like many people in small towns, I wear two hats. The other hat is the Chair of the Historical Commission. So we are also not only concerned about erosion, but the effects on historic and cultural properties, and making sure those are all taken into account. We can't, I know oftentimes, we get into these positions of having silos, and yet, as a town, we have to look across all of these different silos and advocate on behalf of the town because that's how we live, and that's how we want to attract visitors. So in closing, I just want to say that we care very deeply about erosion and water quality as well as invasive species. And we will be paying close attention to this process as we are the FERC process, and we will continue. One of my responsibilities as a Select Board member over the last four years, welcome to municipal government, has been to participate in the FERC First Light process. And what I've learned deeply and care deeply about is the fact that we have a great region and lots of people who care and work well together. So we'll be following this process closely with our colleagues in Gill and Montague and the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Joe Comerford, and no one else on the table.
Good evening, Senator.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Tim, and thank you to everyone who is making this evening possible. And thank you especially to the constituents who are on. I want to say that Representative Natalie Blay is also here, and she represents a good portion, both of the work that's been done by the state delegation and, of course, the surrounding towns. So my name is Joe Comerford. I represent the Hampshire-Franklin-Wooster District in the state senate. That's 25 cities and towns that array along, many of them array along the Connecticut River from the Vermont-New Hampshire border on down to North Hampton and Hatfield. We have been engaged as a state delegation with federal partners and with the governor's office, as you know, Tim, very well, in a process that's been now several years in the lead-up to the 401 process. We're engaged because, of course, we care about this. The Connecticut River is, of course, the blue highway, the soul of our region, also the economic and, of course, tourism force, not to mention the wildlife habitat and just the well-being of our communities and farmers. But also because we're engaged, because constituents are asking us to be engaged. And I was able to listen to the webinar this morning, or this afternoon. And I want to thank DEP and recognize your partnership, which I think has been stellar over these years and the ways in which you've listened to constituents and really been very, very responsive, not only to the delegation, but to the people we work for. So I'll just run through very briefly a comment that the delegation submitted to FERC. Not all of the aspects of our comment are directly related to the 401. So for example, on flood control and indigenous and cultural properties, I won't go into detail. But, you know, for constituents watching, the delegation is paying attention to these things as are our federal partners and the governor's office, and we're grateful for that, and we'll stick to the 401 now. And I want to say that Bee, Bee Jac, and from Northfield, and Steve Ellis from Montague, and Ray Perrington of Gill, the delegation upholds their comments. These are municipal officials. They have let us know their concerns, and we have integrated many of their concerns, virtually all of their concerns, into our delegation comment, as you know, Tim. So as I said, the delegation submitted the following, and I'll go very quickly through the list, and again, it's available online, to FERC, and I should say, as I begin, that we have received a reply from First Light, just today, actually, disagreeing with our comment. So it's good to have, it's good to have the conversation out in the light, and we'll go from here, which actually, I think, Tim and friends at DEP, it speaks to the importance of your work. So we are, again, very, very grateful. So in quick, quick summary, I will say that the delegation is exceedingly concerned about erosion. We have spoken at length, I know you know this, Tim, to DEP- We have spoken at length, I know you know this, Tim, to DEP and EEA folks about the impact of erosion, not only on individual property, property owners, but on access to the river and certainly in communities. We're concerned about the financial impact on communities. You know, we do not believe they should shoulder the burden of more ecologically sound practices. And one of the case in points, of course, is Montague that may lose funds as a result of a lessening flow. We're very concerned about that. We think that is not the way to go. We are asking for a shortened license. We understand that FERC does not grant licenses fewer than 30 years. If that were so, we likely would ask for fewer than 30 years, but we have asked for a 30 year license. We understand the magnitude of the license process and the costs associated. We don't do this lightly, but we are mindful of two things. One, the length of time it takes to get to relicensing, right? Our current license with First Light is case in point. But also we understand that the technologies around the green energy revolution that all of us want are changing so quickly that we would like to be able to be nimble and seize cleaner, greener technology when it is available and we know and we hope it will be. We are concerned about the minimum flows below the Turner's Falls Dam. And we have offered specific flow levels, thanks to the work of advocates and researchers in the region who are also constituents. But we really are very concerned, not only for recreation, and of course, we're concerned about recreation, but for the wildlife. We do believe we've read enough of the research that our constituents have done and we do believe these flows are, are projected to be far too low. And potentially very damaging to the wildlife habitat. And we further, we really want to talk about the fish passage and barrier net timelines. The timelines of completion of the installation of the fish lift after nine years and the barrier net after seven years, frankly, is just far too long. We understand these are expensive processes. But the impact on the region needs to be prioritized in this relicensing. And we very much hope that DEP through the 401 process will, will hear the, the delegation's concerns. And of course, more importantly, our constituents' concerns and hasten these significantly so that we can lessen the negative impact on the environment. We also ask in our letter for significant monitoring of the barrier net and associated data. And then finally, we ask for, and with regard to the data, let me just say, there's a, a passage that we've included that really again is informed by experts in our midst, looking for much greater transparency and data sharing so that we can judge the efficacy of some of the remediations and make changes as necessary. And then lastly, I'll just say, we ask in this letter for a decommissioning fund to be established. And that is because we understand the magnitude of the operation in both of the facilities in this relicensing. And we are concerned that the communities of Gil and Montague and Northfield and others not be saddled with any kind of cleanup or deconstruction should that happen. I know First Light has said it is solvent and it is not worried about that and totally understand that. But we would feel much better on behalf of the people we work for if there was a just decommissioning fund. And that I've gone over, but the detail, again, you have the detail and we're grateful for the conversations we've had about this. And with that, I'll conclude. Thank you, Tim.
All right. Thank you, Senator. Tori?
And next we have Natalie Blake and no one else on deck.
Thank you so much, Victoria. And, and Tim, thank you so much for, for being here with us tonight. I like Senator Comerford to have the opportunity to join in with this afternoon's panel and want to thank Senator Comerford for her leadership and certainly that of, of her team as well as the legislative delegation who has been really on top of this based on the concerns that we have heard from so many of our constituents. And Tim, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you and Mast DEP for being involved and certainly listening frequently to the concerns that we have, have brought to you and for being responsive to the concerns that we have lifted up to Mast DEP and the role that you can play as, as a state regulatory agency here in this process and understanding the very important role that FERC has to play in this process. I do want to take the, just a minute to thank our, our federal partners in the congressional and senate delegation who have worked with us as, as partners. As we as state legislators have tried to lift up what we have been hearing from our constituents. I represent 18 communities in Franklin County, one of which, as Senator Comerford noted, is Montague. And I want to lift up the concerns that have been shared by the town of Montague and, and Steve Ellis. And I would just say that it feels like there has never been a more pivotal time for Massachusetts to lead in terms of how much we can push the federal government to respond to the changes that we're seeing in terms of, of certainly the climate changes that we are seeing as a Commonwealth, but also the green energy revolution that we are seeing here. And the fact of the matter is that a 50 year license is too long, given what we are seeing in terms of the changes in technology. And I'm hopeful that the Commonwealth will use this process that we have here at the state level to really push the federal government to be responsive in the way that they can, given their regulations, to ensure that we are protecting our waterways, this Connecticut River that flows right across, you know, I, I was living in Sunderland. I'm now living across the river in Deerfield, so I see this river every single day. And I feel what the, the B from Northfield said today. We are seeing the impacts on this river and on this ecosystem every single day because we live here. And it's my hope that the Commonwealth will do everything that it can in its purview to really show the federal government what we need to be doing as a Commonwealth to ensure a transition to a green energy future. And I, I just really want to point to, to two pieces here that Senator Comerford so raised so well. The delegation did pull together a very comprehensive list of concerns and suggestions. The 50 year license is too long. And I, I really want to also lift up the decommissioning fund because we know that this is not the future that we are looking towards. And this will have a significant impact on our communities. And, and also just having this facility here. Nuclear facilities were mentioned earlier this afternoon. We need to make sure that going forward, there is some sort of decommissioning fund. Should this facility no longer exist or continue to function going forward? So again, I want to thank Mast DEP for having these two virtual sessions. I know that there's also an opportunity for people to comment in writing and I hope many people will take advantage of that opportunity because I know that DEP is listening. They have listened to this delegation and have been incredibly responsive. And Tim, I know that you and your team will be responsive to what you've heard today and certainly in writing. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Representative.
There's currently no other elected or appointed officials with raised hands.
Okay. At this point, we'll open up the public comment period to all others who wish to comment. So at this point, you could raise your virtual hand and we'll, we'll take them in the order that you raised them.
First we have Nina Gordon Kirsch and on deck will be Miriam Curling.
Good evening, Ms. Kirsch.
Hi, Tim. Thanks so much for having me. My name is Nina Gordon Kirsch. I work for the Connecticut Rivers Conservancy. I'm the Massachusetts River Steward. And the Connecticut River Conservancy is a nonprofit citizen group established in 1952 to restore and advocate for clean water, healthy habitats and resilient communities to support a diverse and thriving watershed. And we've been involved with this FERC relicensing process for over 12 years now. We've submitted comments in all the public comment periods, reviewed and critiqued studies submitted by First Light. And we're closely following every single step of this process. We did not sign on to any settlement agreements because we have a number of important concerns, some of which I'm going to speak about tonight. The portions of the Connecticut River, both above and below Turner's Falls Dam are currently listed as impaired due to impacts from these hydro projects. And First Light does not show how these proportions of the river will move to attainment status in their proposal in their 401 application. For the stretch of the river below Turner's Falls Dam, the proposed minimum flows of 500 CFS from July through November are inadequate to protect and maintain aquatic life uses. These proposed five, the proposed 500 CFS flows also negatively impact recreational activities violating water quality standards. First Light's own boating navigability study showed that even a flow of 545 CFS was inadequate for safe navigation. Additionally, these proposed flows are also insufficient to restore the river's natural aesthetic conditions, which are also required underwater quality standards. Thus, a higher minimum of 1,400 CFS would meet all three of these issues, aquatic life use, recreation and aesthetic standards. First Light is also, is basing these proposed minimum flows on two non-aquatic plant species that would not exist in the stretch below Turner's Falls Dam, except due to years of de-watering. Additionally, there's no information that these plants are currently there. And if they've survived the floods of 20, of July 2023, then they may be able to survive more water. And there's no publicly available information to corroborate First Light's analysis of these plants. The Turner's Falls impoundment suffers from profound erosion exacerbated by the facility's operations. Historical data and studies, including reports by the Army Corps and observations by CRC experts confirm that the pumping activities are the primary cause of erosion. First Light's barrier net is inadequate to prevent fish impingement during pumping operations. And the application fails to adequately address the impact on juvenile shad and other species. The proposed timelines are also insufficient. I want to emphasize the necessity for mandating decommissioning plans, as we've heard from our representatives from First Light, for when the facilities are ready for retirement and removal. These power facilities may become obsolete and are expected to change in energy production in the span of this next license. The applicant should be required to submit a removal and restoration plan that will fully restore the project site to its natural pre-dam and pre-impoundment condition, along with estimated cost of carrying out the plan. And lastly, I request for an in-person option here in our local area of the projects for both the next public information session and for the public hearing on the draft water quality certificate. CRC will provide additional written comments to expand on these issues. And thank you so much for listening and taking the time to listen to public comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next we will have Miriam Curland and on deck is Laura Kay.
Hi again. I spoke before, but I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that I said and also add some things, like I'm totally confused about how often they're doing it. Like if it's just for emergencies, I, isn't a pump storage, I know I can't ask questions, but I understand pump storage is for when, for like high knee days. But it seems to be, they won't tell us when the, the days that they're using it and, and not using it. But it appears from people who live nearby that it's going like a lot of the time, even though this year, there's been times when it was closed. But when it is functioning, it seems to be going a lot of the time and they're making tons of money by, but you know, by profiting on the energy during times that it's not needed. So that's a, something that's confusing to me. Another thing is like, I just don't understand what all these, but there are so many state agencies that are supposed to be protecting our environment. And when people complain, nothing is done. Nothing significant is done or it's just, we're sort of just patronized and compromises are made, too many compromises. I don't understand how these corporations are able to damage the ecosystem and the biodiversity and the life within these, these things and call it green. I, I just, people, I, it seems like it's just, I don't know, just like they're doing it, like it's being done just to look, to, to give a certain appearance. But it doesn't seem to be really authentic. And I hope that I'm wrong about the DEP. I hope the DEP will really consider these comments and put this, this whole project to rest. It's not working. It's, it's killing thousands and thousands of fish. It's destroying land. And it's really not needed. We really need to, to look at other ways to conserve energy and to and find solutions that aren't damaging the environment. This is how, it's just, this is another step that we're, that humans are taking that is destructive. And we're going to suffer for it in years to come. I want to see future generations being able to enjoy the beauty of all these, these places and wildlife and have a world to live in. So I just hope that DEP will take these, all these comments seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curland.
Ms. Kay disconnected. So next will actually be Jessica Summers and no one on deck.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to be part of the discussion and to comment today. I'm here both as an individual and an Amherst resident and a, you know, concerned resident of the valley, but also as a member of the Western Massachusetts Rights of Nature. We are a grassroots organization in Western Mass that is working to bring about the legal and cultural changes that will help us recognize the rights of the natural world to exist, thrive, evolve and be restored. We care deeply about the wellbeing of the Connecticut River and the ecosystems it sustains, both because of the essential nature of the river to human life and thriving in the valley, but also because of, we believe it has a right to exist and be protected as its own entity. I, we will be submitting detailed comments and have already submitted detailed comments to FERC that will, that align very much with the comments you've already heard tonight. But I just wanted to say that we share the concerns that have been raised already about erosion, flooding, ecosystem damage, damage to indigenous cultural practices and the length of the license, which locks in both current damages and future damages to all of the things that we've mentioned. In particular, I just want to highlight, we share the concerns about the minimum flow of the dam, which are insufficient to support the ecological health of the river and the river species. We share the concerns about the length of the license, which frankly, is just unconscionable in the time of rapid climate change and the green energy transition, which we hope Massachusetts will lead. And we share the, the sense of importance of a decommissioning fund that will help the community to, to weather the transition away from this dam, which we believe will eventually happen. So those are my broad comments, but we look forward to submitting detailed comments soon. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much for commenting.
Next we will have. Next, we will have Doty Melnikov and no one else on deck. Ms. Melnikov, you'll receive a prompt to join us panelists. If you could join us, then you'll be able to unmute and make your comment.
I want to remind folks too, that if you want to comment this evening, now is the time to do so. Raise your virtual hand and we'll, we'll call you in the order that you raise your hand. At this point, Tori says that it's just Ms. Melnikov, Doty Melnikov, who has raised their hand.
Hi. I think you can hear me now.
Definitely. Yes.
All right. Thank you again. It's good to see you this evening. And it's, it's a, I'm glad to be here and to take part in this, this evening's talk. You know, so I, I wanted to start by saying I am a member of the, my name is Doty Melnikov. I live here in Greenfield. I am a member of the Connecticut River Defenders, which also is a grassroots organization that started a couple of years ago in response to years and years of information that was coming out regarding the damaging effects of Northfield Mountain Pump Station on the Connecticut River, especially right here where we live in Franklin County. But of course, affecting the whole river system. I just support everything that folks have said about the concerns for the fish and for the concerns for the aquatic life, all the aquatic life that gets damaged and destroyed through this process. I, I was also glad to hear, and I put it like top on my list, that I really wanted to make sure to mention about decommissioning, but that has come up quite a few times this evening, and I'm glad to see that. And I would say that the one thing that I stand in opposition to with what I've heard tonight is that I, I believe there is no room for compromise at this point. I think we are at a very dangerous point in making decisions for our future, for a viable living future. So I'm, I'm against any relicensing for any period of time, but I do believe that we should have money brought forth to decommission and restore the river. You know, we gotta say that, you know, what we've seen really being handed to us are false solutions that are manufactured by large corporate entities that don't even exist within this, with, within this country, this area. This is coming from Canada. And yes, we should all be able to work together. And we do all need to work together to solve these problems, but not by somebody coming in and determining solutions that are not, not truthful and, and are, are not going to be a positive impact to our, our environment and to our ecosystem along the Connecticut River. So I mean, Firstlight, I believe, you know, does, you know, lie to us or stretch the truth, you could say. It lies to its investors. It's simply not clean energy. They have some far-fetched idea in the future of bringing wind from the, from the coast and using that, you know, 200 miles of transmission lines and using that to power the water up into the reservoir, the commodified man-made reservoir on the top of Northfield Mountain, which is hollowed out. And the inside of the mountain is where all of the contraptions exist that run the turbines, et cetera. You know, and again, I brought it up earlier today, but you know, I'm concerned because there was a, a definitely a big problem within, within the structure of, Firstlight, Northfield Mountain Pump Storage, and we never really got any information about it. You know, it could have been very damaging. I just feel like the public needs to know. We need to know what's happening. I just, one more thing I want to emphasize is that Northfield Mountain Pump Storage began its operation in 1972. It did not operate until 1972, and it's been operating really in violation of the Clean Water Act ever since then. So we can't find our solutions in harming nature. We can't spend another 50 years or another 30 years supporting an unsustainable, ineffective system, inefficient and ineffective. We need nature to survive. It's not the other round, other way around.
Your time is, is up, Ms. Melnikov. If you could, if you could, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, okay, I'll do that. I just want to say, you know, I just also object to the process where Firstlight parsed up the river into pieces and stakeholders, recreation here, towns here, you know, fish over there, you know, that we do that to nature and commodify living rivers.
Thank you, Ms. Melnikov.
Thank you.
Thank you for commenting this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we will have Laurel Facy, and on deck is Peg Hall.
Thank you. This is Laurel Facy from Wendell.
Good evening.
And can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Senator Joe Comerford has transmitted her constituents' environmental concerns, including those who do environmental science and have for decades. A decommissioning fund was a new request with which I agree, and Representative Natalie Blay reiterated the desire for a shorter license period of 30 instead of 50 years. Good ideas. Bee Jock of Northfield spoke first, mentioning how despite being located on both sides of the Connecticut River, residents now have only access to the river at two controlled locations. In the seventies, my family's lease was terminated along the river, so the corporations would have full control. For years, the river was not in good shape. Falling out of a canoe was not the thing to do in those days, but thanks to the wonderful DEP, the river is now a fishing and swimming destination. And then along came Vermont Yankee and the Northfield Pump Storage Project, which was supposed to be the recipient of too cheap to meter nuclear power from the nuclear station of river. Now, with the Vermont Yankee Nuclear Station no longer in operation, the source of power for the Northfield reservoirs also no longer too cheap to meter. While it must be economically viable, the energy that Firstlight must purchase is not what is called these days "clean" energy. It is less than, I think, 10% solar, wind, or geothermal, and oil, gas, coal, and nuclear are not green. So when nuclear, I'm sorry, when NMPS, when Northfield Mountain is generating, redundant or reproduced energy is returned to the grid at a net loss of about 34%. So it takes more fossil and nuclear energy to operate pump storage facility than it gives back. This makes no sense energy-wise. The lost energy alone is enough to light up several towns. Firstlight is making enormous profits that have been shielded by registering it in Delaware. Another shell game. When required to report one year of profits to FERC, Firstlight reported profits of $158 billion for 2019. Ow, who knows? It's also awarded forward capacity payments, which are large sums of money to be available to provide energy to the grid in times of peak emergency demand. Nothing's ever done about promoting conservation. The public which pays for this is not allowed to know when or for how long Firstlight is being asked to be available for peak demand, nor how much the Northfield Mountain is actually used during these times, which brings into question the economic abuse of destroying Connecticut River. How often and how much power is generated are unanswered questions. It is not a transparent process. Lastly, until the Connecticut River's restoration is prioritized, we are at heightened risk of losing this lifeline of New England, promoting loss of endangered species such as short-veered sturgeon, which Carl Myers has told us all about on different trips that we've taken through the river with him. And it contributes to the climate chaos by the deadly hidden and ongoing use of fossil fuels and nuclear power. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Facy.
Next, we will have Peg Hall, and on deck is Alex Durski.
Good evening, Ms. Hall.
Good evening, Tim. Nice to meet you. I am Peg Hall. I am a member of, but not tonight, representing Green and Greenfield. Green and Greenfield put on a webinar on this topic about two and a half years ago, and I have been maintaining a website on this process ever since. I wanted to start by thanking the DEP, you and Dave in particular, and the delegation for how responsive you have been to my suggestions and Green and Greenfield's suggestions about creating a website, having a way for people to learn about the hearing, and more examples than I'm going to mention in my three minutes, but thank you. I will be submitting written testimony on the obvious topics of erosion and the height of the upper reservoir and cultural resources and aquatic life not being just fish or just being endangered species, and on the decommissioning and on 30 years instead of 50, and on flow below the dam and on the barrier net and the timing thereof, but I'm not going to take time at the moment to go into any of that. I'm just going to mention a couple of things. The FERC says in how to present comments to them, they remind the public that the FERC isn't here and we are, and to, to say what is, that we are seeing, that, you know, let them see the facility through our eyes. And I want to mention that when I moved to Greenfield seven and a half years ago, the first time I figured out how to drive from Greenfield to Turner's Falls, you go over these two bridges, and the first one I went over was some kind of a dry rocky gully. And the second one was obviously some sort of form of a channelized river. And it wasn't till much later that I figured out that the dry gully was supposed to have been the river. And it is the river. It's just that it's, it's not a bypass reach. That's where the river's supposed to be, and there was like no sign of it. Similarly, the Turner's Falls impoundment terminology, that's supposed to be the river, and we need to return them to things that can be considered a river. The, the timing of the original license back in 72 was, was right about the time the Clean Water Act. This facility has never been through water quality licensing before, or NEPA didn't exist at the time. So if we think of this as, what if this was being proposed right now, if it didn't already exist, this would never be licensed. Now, it does exist. We know there's those issues. I do not envy you guys the balancing act you have ahead of you. But try to see it through the eyes of, what if this was being applied for right now? What conditions would they have to meet? And finally, one thing that I have not heard mentioned by anyone else, the, the way I usually interact with legislatures across the country as I work on product stewardship legislation, and under the principle of responsible party pays, most of our pieces of legislation across the country require the responsible party, in our case, producers, in this case, the utility, to pay the costs of the oversight agency. Now, whether that would be X number of FTEs or, or a flat fee, or how that would be arranged, I don't know in this case. But the idea that a understaffed, underfunded government agency should be up against a for-profit entity with deep pockets has never made sense to me. They can wear you down. They can wear you out. They can outlast you, and you can't possibly have enough feet on the ground to do the enforcement necessary. So I would strongly look into whether they can pay for the needs of the agency to do the oversight that's required to keep up with them over the next 30 years, and I hope it's not 50. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Next, we will have Alex Durski, and on deck is Nina Keller.
Hi, Tim. This is Alex Durski, resident of Northfield. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I just wanted to echo some points that other folks have made, and in particular Senator Comerford, I heard earlier today. And regarding sort of the timing, the mitigation, and I'm not familiar with the 401, how the 401 regs, you know, apply to, to relicensing of the facility, but you know, to the extent there's an opportunity to, you know, accelerate mitigation to maybe taking into account some impacts that are already occurring in addition to, you know, ongoing impacts that would be, you know, the subject of the licensing for the next period of time. I think that makes a lot of sense. So I hope that's something the, the DEP can consider, and thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Durski.
Next, we will have Nina Keller, and there is no one else with a raised hand.
Hi, and, hi, good evening. And there. I was mainly informed by Pam Harvey's presentation for what I wanted to address this evening because your overview has so many of the compartments that people are concerned about. Maintaining the natural habitat, which has been destroyed by this flow, assuring reproduction and migration, and having plans, hearing what Firstlight is planning about that. Are they even concerned about that? The mitigation plans, I haven't heard anything about, and that's under your purview. Why could there not be a secure, independent pond established instead of sucking from the river? And the discharge of their effluent certainly undermines the integrity of all habitat. So I don't know if I'm under the misinformation, but I thought they were applying for a license, and now I hear it being spoken of for 30 years. They shouldn't have any license unless they can prove mitigation the costs of a secure pond as opposed to using new river water, whether it's daily or weekly, I don't care. They use more electricity than they produce. So it's sort of a moot point. This is a defunct project, and I urge you to not grant them a license 30 years? No years. So thank you very much for your concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Keller, for your comments.
You're welcome.
There are currently no more raised hands.
Okay. At this point, if anybody else would like to comment this evening, now is the time to raise your virtual hand. Tori has informed us that nobody's raised their hand at this point. So if nobody raises their hand in the next minute or so, we'll close the hearing for this evening. And while I'm waiting for somebody to do that, I do want to remind folks that the written comment period is open until June 3rd at 5:00 PM. And the webpage has instructions on how to submit written comments, but I can just remind you now, you can do it by email to DEP dot HYDRO. That's DEP dot H Y D R O at mass dot gov. And then please include Firstlight 401 WQC in the subject line. And again, the public comment period closes at 5:00 PM on June 3rd, 2024. We will also be having a public information session at the end of September, beginning of October. We haven't specified the date yet. And then we'll having, will be have another public hearing in the beginning of 2025, probably January, February timeframe to visit the status of everything at that point. Tori, are there any hands raised at this point for more comments?
No more hands.
Okay, well, with that said, I want to thank everyone for providing comments, as well as those who haven't provided comments and just for being in attendance. Thank you for participating. We will post the recording of, of the hearing tonight on the DEP webpage. And if there's no further testimony at this point, it sounds like there isn't. I'm going to close the public hearing. It's May 29th, 2024, and closing at 8:12 PM. I want to thank everybody for participating and commenting, and the hearing is closed. And Tori, you can turn off the recording at this point. Thank you.